I'd like to call to order the council meeting of April 22nd. And I would like to apologize to our listeners and those in the audience that we are approximately an hour late, but this is budget cycle. And in order to make sure that we are through the departments that we have asked to be here, it has run a little bit longer. So having said that, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunbar, councilmember Garza, councilmember Hussein, councilmember Jackson, councilmember Spatafor, councilmember Spitzley, councilmember Washington, councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are eight members present at quorum. No members are absent.
At this time, we'll rise for a meditation and pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone that would like to remember someone at this time? Seeing none.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are to... Comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Comments by councilmembers. Are there any comments by councilmembers? Councilmember Jackson, and then Vice President Spatafor.
Thank you. Good evening. Just want to remind people about our Fourth Ward Monthly Constituent Contact Meeting. It'll be this fourth Saturday, April 27th, at Gregory's, which was, which is at 2510 North MLK, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00. We have a very special guest. Our very own council president, Wood, will be running the meeting as I'm traveling. And from my understanding, besides anything you want to talk about, there will also be budget conversations and possibly a representative from the school district to discuss the millage. So thank you, President Wood.
Thank you. Are there other council comments at this time? Seeing none, we will go to the clerk.
Thank you, President Wood. A couple of announcements. We are two weeks and one day away from the special election for the Lansing School District. So today is the last day to register by mail or at the Secretary of State's office. But you can still register up until and including on Election Day in my office at either location here in City Hall or at 2500 South Washington Avenue. And when you register, you can get an absentee ballot right away if you wish to. You can also, all voters now under Proposal Three that was passed last year can vote absentee. So contact my office or stop by one of the locations if you're interested in doing that. Or you can vote on Election Day at your regular polling location. Couple of other announcements. The city primary is coming up, and tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. is the filing deadline if you want to run for office. We have two council-at-large seats, as well as the First and Third Ward are up for election. And then finally, I want to thank Rachel Moore, who's been with us for the past several months as our intern helping with council meetings. Tonight is her last council meeting, so thank you for all of your assistance. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience with a community event, we'll give you one minute to give us the details.
Loretta.
This Saturday, the Friends of Lansing's Historic, or this Sunday, I'm sorry, the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries is hosting their doggy Easter parade costume contest at Mount Hope Cemetery at 3:00. And we encourage people to register for that on our Facebook page if possible, or you can register the day of the event. The fee is $8 per dog, and the funds will go to buy monuments, or markers, I should say, for the boys' training school sites at Mount Hope where 60 graves have gone unmarked for a century and, in some cases, longer than that. So again, 3:00 on Sunday, the 28th, at Mount Hope Cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other community events? All right. Then we are to registration for public comment on legislative matters. That's anything on the agenda that is listed under the consent agenda, resolutions for action, ordinances for passage, or any of the four public hearings. That's the blue sheet, and Rachel will be picking that up in just a moment. So sign, get up right now if you want to sign in to speak. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor, sure.
Thank you. First, we had a very successful Neighborhood Advisory Board grant issuance a few nights ago. We gave money out to many of the neighborhood groups. This summer, we're going to see, as we all go around and visit our neighborhoods, we're going to see a lot of really cool things in the city of Lansing, so I am excited about that. Everything from little libraries to soccer goals to flowers to just tons of stuff. And as it's 75 degrees out today, I'm excited to see everybody out working on the neighborhoods and doing cleanups and things. So that was very successful, so thank you to everybody involved in that. This Wednesday, the 24th, right? That's this Wednesday, yep, in two days, we will have our next Walking Wednesday. And this one is going to be in the BWL Eckert Power Plant. That should be pretty cool. I have actually, I did that about two months ago, and it was an exceptional tour, just to see what goes on in a power plant. They'll be going up like 10 at a time, so if you're coming, be patient. If you're not in the first 10, we're going to rotate people through. But that will happen at 6:00 p.m. at the Eckert Power Plant. On Thursday at 6:00 p.m., and then again Friday at 8:00 a.m., we have our Neighborhood Round Tables at the Foster Community Center. This month, we're discussing, we're discussing the bulk trash pickup system and opportunities to organize litter, bulk trash, and brush cleanups in your neighborhood. On Saturday, there will be a cleanup in Cherry Hill Park. So the neighbors in Cherry Hill will be doing another park cleanup. They do it, I know they did it last year, I don't know if they do it every year, but I know they did it last year. So cleanup at the, at the park, cleaning brush from the riverfront and, and other things throughout that park. And then Tuesday, the 30th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Patton Gill Biotech Academy, which is the former Fairview Elementary, is our next Housing and Neighborhood Resource Summit. So we'll have all the, we'll, first, you get to see the cool renovated school, and then hear about programs and resources available for neighbors in Lansing. You get free pizza, and we have giveaways and things like that, and you get to see a lot of the cool things and options and resources we have. And then the Wednesday after that, we'll do our Walking Wednesday downtown with the Capital Area District Library and celebrate a Jane Jacobs Week. So they'll do a historic tour of Washington Square and discuss the past, present, and future of downtown Lansing. And that's what we've got going on.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I did want to announce that Bethel Church at 4817 Bristol, on Sunday, the 28th, will be having a vision hearing and dental free clinic, and it will be from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For those that could use those services, this is open to the public. So with that, we will go to the city clerk now.
Okay. Thank you. We are to public comment on legislative matters, and as I indicated, that includes the items listed on the consent agenda, resolutions for action and ordinances, as well as the following public hearings. Number one, Z1, 2019, 901 West Cleveland Street rezoning from B Residential to F Commercial. Z2, number two, Z2, 2019, 714 North Pine rezoning from C Residential to D1 Professional Office. Number three, the Consolidated Strategy and Plan Submission for Community Development Block Grant Fund Resources. And number four, for a noise waiver special permit for work on Scissor Chavez Avenue and Washington Avenue.
Thank you. And if councilmember Hussein could address one and two, and then Vice President Spatafor, three and four.
Sure. So we have two rezon requests that are up for public hearing tonight. The first is in consideration of Z1, 2019. This is for the western portion of the property. It's 5,295 square feet, and this is for 901 Cleveland Street. The request is a rezon from B Residential to F Commercial District. The applicant in this case is Optic LLC. They are a full-service video production company that has been operating on the corner of Cleveland Street and Oakland Street for the past 20 years. In any event, a little bit of a history in terms of this rezon request, because it is a bit unique. In 2015, the Eagle County Land Bank demolished a home on the subject property. Two years later, Optic LC, or LLC, sorry, moved in and actually purchased that property and then combined the two parcels. So kind of a unique circumstance. We have a parcel of land with two zoning categories. The company has been around for 20 years. They have historically employed about six individuals, but the company is growing. And so that is causing some concerns regarding parking, whether that be for their employees, whether that be for patrons. There are a number of people that are having to park on the street. So what this particular company would like to do is to actually pave the subject property and allow for parking. So that is the reason for that request. With regards to the second request, this is in consideration of Z2, 2019. This is for 714 North Pine Street. This is a rezon request from C Residential District to D1 Professional Office District. The applicant in this case is the Capital Area Housing Partnership. They did acquire this particular property for office space for Ferris Manor in Waldorf Park. These are the two properties that council not too long ago approved extensions of 4% pilots for. They are working with some of our most vulnerable neighborhoods and supporting them with intensive support services and things of that nature. So what they would like to do is to renovate the existing structure and create office space on the first floor. They'd like to construct a one-bedroom apartment on the second floor, and their idea is to, to house a support service worker or a peer support person in that, in that particular room. So that is the reason for the second request.
Thank you, councilmember Hussein. Vice President Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. The next public hearing is in consideration of the Annual Consolidated Strategy and Plan Submission and Action Plan Proposed Budget for Community Development Block Grant, more commonly known as the CDBG, fund resources for the fiscal year 2020. We did hear a more detailed presentation, but it is a 4.275 million dollar spend plan, or action plan, rather, including 2 million CDB entitlement grants, 50,000 in CDBG program income, 730,000 in CDBG previous year's annual funding that rolls over, 794,000 in home program funds, 405,000 in home previous year annual funding, 120,000 in home program income, and 167,000 in ESG program funds.
And then you can go into the next.
The next one is in consideration of a special noise permit related to water main work, milling, and resurfacing of Caesar Chavez Avenue and Washington Avenue for work on weekdays and weekends for the period of April 29th through October 10th, 2019. The link in my document's not working. Hold on just a second. There we go. This is for three particular areas. Oops, lost the document. From the Hoffman Brothers, it's included in the resolution later on in the packet, just a moment. This will be on Caesar Chavez Avenue from Capitol Avenue east to the bridge over the Grand River, Washington Avenue from Maple Street to Chavez, and the intersection of Washington Avenue and Chavez.
Okay. Thank you, Vice President Spatafor. Number four will be something that we will be voting on this evening, depending on the comments that we hear from the public at this time. And before we call our speakers, we also have a letter, we have an email from Don Horton in opposition of the Red Cedar, we also, project, and we also have a letter of support from Price Dobernick with Local 333, the plumbers and pipe fitters. So we'll have those entered into the record as part of that. Thank you.
Okay. We are to actual public comment. We have Loretta Stanaway followed by Evan Goodman.
I do support the rezoning for Cleveland and for Pine Street and for the Simkin Triangle. I do not support the Brownfield Plan or the Purchase and Redevelopment Agreement for the Red Cedar. You've heard me speak many times down here. I think you pretty much all know why. Overriding reason is I think we're fighting land that we should not be fighting. We should be adapting it to a more productive use that fits its purpose better. The partial public ownership of the parking structure is still an issue to me, and I don't know how that's structured, if we're going to have a cost for that or how that is set up, but it's a concern. And the language in Section 2, 731, about the $10 million bond is unclear, and I'm not certain what that translates to, so I'm curious there. I'm very concerned that we're going to get into the same situation East Lansing has found itself in recently, where after years and years and years of proposed developments, they finally approve something, and now low and behold, the developer is changing things right and left after the council had approved the project. I think that there's also a concern with the possibility of a bankruptcy on the Brownfield. Now, I've been told that the city would not be at any risk there, but that depends on what happens. If the developer goes partly through the process of remediating that Brownfield and then runs out of funding or quits, whatever the case may be, who is it then that's on the hook for finishing that remediation if it isn't the city? I don't support a special assessment on the Red Cedar floodplain, and I'm wondering, after we finally heard about that, what other gremlins are floating around out there that after this gets approved will suddenly emerge. If you look at the timeline given, the first proposed development would be the student housing. The second one would be the student housing. And then thirdly, multifamily, and then senior assisted, and hotels. Hotels would not be completed until 2022, according to their projected timelines. And on another subject, on parks and recreation, as I said last week, I am in favor of forming a 501(c)(3) nonprofit in order to shepherd funds from the Parks and Rec Department for better use. But as I said then, too, the devil is in the details, and I do not support the community, Capital Region Community Foundation controlling funds from that or from appropriations from property sales. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we call the next speaker, I do want to say I had received requests from councilmembers to pull setting the public hearing in consideration of the special assessment for the Red Cedar floodplain until next week, allowing the administration an opportunity to work with property owners, residential property owners, to see if community development block grant funds can be utilized to help pay for those assessments. And when we set the public hearing, you have to have the roll ready for that. So Mayor, did you want to speak to that just briefly?
Yeah, just for councilmembers, no, we sent you information today, later, I think Samantha sent it later today with the CD. I have it on. It's on. Oh, sorry. I'll get closer. We sent councilmembers information today with the CDBG eligibility. We had a good brown bag meeting and conversation about this issue. So we know, we know what percentage is, what number of residents are residents as opposed to businesses, and we know, we generally know which ones are landlord owners versus regular property owners. And then we have an idea, or we know which ones are in CDBG-eligible territories and which ones are not. We will continue to work with council on the CDBG funds that we have and when and things like that. So yeah, when we had our conversation, we said, let's, let's pull it until we have all the information. So I am supportive of that, and we'll continue to, to work on those numbers and information for council before, before you have to take any action.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Spitzley, and then councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I really appreciate, Madam President. Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for, for doing that, to take the step back. And I'll let councilmember Washington go into detail, but that was, when we met with the mayor, that was extremely important to us because of that community and because they're already stressed and, you know, because of just all kinds of assessments that are coming down the pike, that we took a step back. So I really appreciate both of you doing that.
And councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say a special thank you to the mayor. This, these rolls were going to hit my most economically challenged constituents, and it was really, really troubling to me, where some of this money may not be a lot of money for us. It's an incredible amount of money for some of my constituents that are looking at more millages and other assessments. And so for the mayor to come up with the idea of CDBG funds and for Patricia to ask for it to be delayed a week, I just really, on behalf of my constituents and for me, to say thank you very much.
All right. And just to be clarified, that in order to make the rolls, we will have to act on this on the 29th. Otherwise, this will then go into the winter taxes. So, excuse me, councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm just a little confused. So we're pulling the Red Cedar Brownfield today?
No.
Oh.
The Red Cedar floodplain, which was what we had talked about during committee of the whole.
And that makes more sense from the comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Evan Goodman, and then Catherine Otterson.
Good evening. My name is Evan Goodman. I am a clinical psychologist, and when I was a teenager, I was a board member of the Lansing Area Skate and Bike Recreation Foundation. For those of you who do not know what that was, that was the organization that did fundraising to get the Ranny Skate Park funded for and opened. And there's a lot of development opportunity and potential in Ranny Park as well as in the Red Cedar floodplain. But what I am concerned of is that the skate park may need to be taken up in any way, and the park is designed to last itself as it is. It could survive an earthquake, as it really happens. And I have gotten information that there might not be entirely consistent development plans circulating, and so I'm just concerned for the future of the skate park, even for the people of Lansing who don't skateboard or don't use the park. This still sends a message to the community. It sends a message to people that we care about you. We care about your recreation. We want you to have opportunities, and we want you to stay safe as well. And I think that there's a lot more development potential there, too. There's a need for lights at the skate park. If you look at Frandor, if you look at the parking lot next to it, if you look at Michigan Avenue, everything around it has a lot of lights that one doesn't. I could personally work on getting funding for those lights. That's another matter for another day, but I just want the council to know that there is a lot of popularity with the skate park. It has actually gotten national attention as well. It sees users every day. And I realize I'm just one person standing here right now today, but we have to think about how in skateboard culture, there's this idea of being anti-establishment. So I don't think you would expect to see anyone come to a council meeting and speak like this. But one thing I will say is, my experience with the board group was, that taught me the value of hard work and it got me to where I am today. And now I'm a psychologist here in the community. So I just want the council to be aware that there could be more, be more benefit going on and more, more that should be considered than what may be present at this time. Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you. Next is Catherine Otterson, and then Alec McCann.
I'm Kathy Otterson, Catherine Otterson, Kato. I am here to talk about the Cooley Hayes House and the, the current bid or offer that's in on the, on that property. I had inquired about that property with a real estate agent that I knew on Facebook, and I knew him as a reporter. And what I wanted to do with Cooley Hayes is to utilize it a lot like how the Turner Dodge Mansion is being used, that it's a venue for people to come in and rent for, for parties, for showers, for meetings. The beauty of that, as a photographer, is that there's this gorgeous park next door that I don't have to mow the lawn on. And, and when I ever, whenever I've talked to any photographers, they're like, oh, my God, that's perfect. And the fact that the substation is there is an advantage for me, because then I have an urban setting. I've got, I've got the parking lot behind, and it's just, it's just a perfect place. And I want it to stay, my cousin has an upholstery shop in Grand Ledge, and we would use it to sell her furniture that she'd restored and refurbished and reupholstered. I've got several photographers that want to come in. I also do commissioned oil portraits, and so I would have a portrait studio as well as an oil portrait studio. I love to bake. I've baked wedding cakes and party cakes for 25 or 30 years. I'm a dessert person. And the only thing I would have to add to it would be ovens, convection ovens, to be able to bake more. And, because it's all about the speed. And just have it as a community place, that it doesn't need to have a commercial zoning, I don't think, because what I'm doing is going to be similar to what the History Museum was in there, that there, there would be some things for sale, but it's not going to be, it would, I don't, it's something I have to investigate on, on whether or not it would have to have a commercial zoning for what I want to do. If it was allowable, I would have it as a bed and breakfast. If that wasn't allowable, it's not a problem. It would just be during the day of events. But, but to be able to use all the space to have fundraisers for 501(c)(3)'s, I do a lot of political fundraisers, and I tell all my 501(c)(3) people, if, if I don't have a paying job, I'll come to your thing and take pictures and post it on Facebook. And, and the, the location I've been to, I've been to gallery shows there, I've been to political fundraisers and in political news conferences. One of them was Acorn back in the day. And, and so I just wanted to put that out there. And I've talked, I've talked to several people about funding, about buying the building and then having the funding in place to replace the boiler, should that need to be happening. As far as painting and scraping it, I happen to love to paint. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just for clarification, we have already, the city has already accepted a sale agreement for this, and so this is information if something were to happen and the sale agreement were not to go through. Thank you.
Next, we have Alec McCann, and then Harold Lehman Jr.
My name is Alec McCann. I live in the East Side neighborhood. I am just, I've spoken to you before about the Red Cedar project. I just want to reiterate the support that I have for it, and if it does go through, I'm quite excited. So I hope that you guys pass this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Harold Lehman Jr., and then Christopher Strokowski.
Thank you very much, council president and councilmembers and mayor. This whole issue regarding the Red Cedar golf course, I go back 60 years plus as a kid, growing up on the East Side and using that golf course. And I may not go over there every day when it was open, but I enjoyed golfing over there as a kid, getting out. Didn't have computers back then, and it was green space. And Frandor developed across the street, and that's how we got Red Cedar. And I don't think Frandor had all the incentives back then in the 50s to entice a developer to develop there. I just wanted to make sure, some facts. When we had a park board, and we had several members on the park board that were pro-golf, and they went out of their way to protect those golf courses. Back in '05, '06, the individuals were passing on, and they were replaced by people on the board that were pro-golf. Of course, we had a strong mayor in '06 who did not live, come raised in Lansing, did not understand what's the history of the golf courses, and basically would pride in himself in getting rid of them. And even though I worked with Mayor Virge Banero, and I consider him still a friend, I think it was wrong. And it was wrong for the council members, and I was on council, to not insist that we put a, a group together of East Lansing and Michigan State University to save the golf course. We had less political power in the other groups that were golfers compared to the outside individuals that own golf courses, and they were pushing this. And so, having said all that... And they were pushing this and, uh, so, having said all that, you know, if we're gonna have a developer, uh, whether it be Joe Ferguson, I wish it was also Leo Jerome, the late Leo Jerome, who did his everything best to try to be a partner with Mr. Ferguson. But he, uh, it didn't work out and I take it as politics. Regarding our drain commissioner, the HM County Drain Commissioner, to allow over 100 mature trees to be cut to, to use an issue about bats when it was really to market the property. I would like to thank Loretta and others for sticking around, doing what they could to oversee this project. The council members, you put a lot of time in. You know, I just think that in closing, whether it be eight to zero, fine, but don't play games where two people take a pass and because they raised an issue in the media, got everybody's hopes up.
Thank you.
And one last thing, I would hope that the mayor and the council members put together a, a group from East Lansing, Lansing, MSU, Lansing Township to oversee the project.
Thank you, Harold.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Christopher Strokowski, followed by Mary Reynolds.
Good evening. I wanted to thank everybody, uh, for their determined efforts working with the development team to refine and amend and enhance this project, um, and the programming on, on the site itself. I believe these were collaborative efforts, um, and I think we've arrived at a collective outcome, an outcome worthy of your support tonight. This represents a $250 million investment in the city of Lansing. This process began more than 10 years ago with ideas and visions from the Drain Commissioner, Pat Linderman, and the determination of LEAP CEO Bob Trisceis. From the environmental challenges of remitting a contaminated golf course to the financial risk reward paradigm based upon the extraordinary efforts of building public infrastructure on this site, this outcome was negotiated by and through candid conversations and discussions and the exchange of many ideas of everyone vested in Lansing's future. They wanted something special, they wanted something different, they asked for open space. Our project is instrumental in the building of and paying for a new Red Cedar Park. The site was never a park, it was a golf course. The new park will be complete with green and blue amenities such as a new public amphitheater, cool water features, walking and biking trails, complete with connections to the Lansing River Trail, the East Side, Frandor and MSU. Through hard work, ingenuity and sheer determination, this will be the most environmentally responsive, flood-proactively engineered, urban retrofit ever seen in the state of Michigan. This will finally, finally activate the portion of the Michigan Avenue corridor. Stakeholders asked for multi-generation housing options with quality buildings engaging a diverse use of materials, textures, and that absorbs the surrounding environments. This project will be that. This project has two hotels, several restaurants, retail and commercial space, and many of these restaurants will be operated by local people from our community, people with proven records of success. Finally, people asked us to provide something for Lansing exclusively, jobs. Not just a job, but good jobs with a chance to earn a living wage. During the construction phase alone, over 1,200 jobs will be, be produced on the site. Following the completion, the site will, in year in and year out, secure an estimated 115 jobs for Lansing residents alone. The Anderson Economic Impact Study for Lansing estimates that more than half a billion dollars of taxes, say that again, a half a billion dollars of taxes, outputs and revenues will flow through Lansing over the next 30 years. The regional impact is even greater. We are asking each member for their vote tonight. In 2014, this project began with $38 million of public financing. Today it is zero. In this agreement, the city has no financial exposure in the project. There is a commitment to local labor, a Lansing project built by Lansing residents. Extraordinary outcome of the stakeholders and the individuals who asked for something different. Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mary Reynolds.
It's been a while. Did Pat Linderman give you folks this up there? Did you read it? Any of you? Being the Drain Commissioner, and I know it's just got the Montgomery Drain involved here on this piece of paper that I scanned, um, it would say, it would, and, and he should know he is our Drain Commissioner. And it would say that a lot of the, I'm trying to be so civil here, um, a lot of the things that have been said flood-wise, water-wise, I mean, you know, you were gonna drive through Michigan Avenue, down through Frandor area and 12 feet of water, uh, that's not true. It, uh, I can't see where it isn't going to be a win-win for us. The jobs, the beautiful buildings that are gonna go in there, personally myself, I'm not a golfer, so I'm glad it's going to be going in this mess. I think we booted it around, we've, it's been held up, pushed down, kicked aside. I think it's time to let it go. Let's build it, let's see what it's got to say, and then when we have the opening and it's a success, you can turn around and say, I told you so. And that's pretty important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was our last speaker for this section. We're to the referral of the public hearings, number 1Z1 2019.
Um, that will go back to development and planning.
Number 2Z2 2019.
Uh, back to development and planning.
Uh, number 3, the CDBG plan.
That will go back to Committee of a Whole.
And number 4, the, uh, noise special permit.
And that will go on file. We will be voting on that this evening.
Okay, we are to, uh, resolutions, I assume there's no consent agenda?
The consent agenda, Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I'd like to remove everything listed under consent agenda to have considered by the council.
All right. Um, that takes us onto our first item and we are rearranging the agenda somewhat. And the first item on the agenda that we will be taking up is the Red Cedar Development, Seventh Amendment to the Amendment in Restating the Real Estate Purchase and Development Agreement, which is under Committee of a Whole. Uh, the reason for turning, switching these around is because this has to be voted on before we vote on the brown field. So with that, I would turn to Vice President Spatafor.
Uh, Madam President, shoot. Move the resolution setting the public hearing for the Red Cedar special, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one.
No.
Is that the right one?
It's the development agreement.
Where is it listed under? Thank you. There we go. Move the resolution approving the Red Cedar Development Seventh Amendment to the amended and restated real estate purchase development agreement.
Okay, we have a motion on that. Uh, are there any comments, questions or concerns? No comments, questions or concerns? Um, Vice Presi, or Vice President, uh, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I mean, I'm gonna comment, so.
Well, that's what I said. Comments, questions or concerns?
So, you know, um, I, I don't think there's any, you know, there's, you know, people knew I had, um, concerns from the last council meeting. I had concerns about some of the proposed changes, um, in the development agreement and I was very vocal that those concerns, um, were leaning me towards, um, not, uh, voting for the development agreement. Since then, um, those changes have been addressed. Specifically, um, I was concerned about, um, the lack of two-bedroom, um, apartments. If we're talking about multifamily, I couldn't see multifamilies being in studio and one-bedroom apartments and that's been, that's been, that's been addressed. Just a couple, um, a couple of things I just wanna say, you know, I, I get it about the golf course, I do. I wasn't here, um, but I was in the city of Lansing and I do remember the discussions. Um, but, you know, at this point, it's, they're gone. And I didn't make the decision for them to be gone, um, but they're gone. And so, we are now, you know, have to move forward. It'll never come back, it's cost prohibitive, and so now we have to move forward. One of the things that, that, for me, um, you know, I have to look at things in total. Um, the project has the support of business, environmental, neighborhood groups, labor and the residents. And so as a councilperson at large, I have to look at all of that and, and listen to all of that support. I've also listened to folks, um, who are not in support, but, um, the people who are supported far outweigh that. So, um, and I, and I also have to, you know, we've heard about assessments and assessments that are coming down the pike that are gonna, um, affect our Frandor neighborhood. And, you know, again, I've already mentioned, we've been assessed to death and our neighbors have been assessed to death. And so at this point, we're looking at a piece of property that has now been determined to be a commercial piece of property also, and so the city of Lansing will be assessed. Um, and so, you know, I have to look at that from a fiscal standpoint and for our financial impact on our residents. And so, you know, um, I was one of the first early supporters of the project, even when it was 38 million, um, and I expressed some concerns then. I'm over the moon that now the burden on the city of Lansing is zero and my concerns about multifamily housing has been addressed, um, you know, the support it has and also, um, some of the concerns I have about, you know, assessments for our residents. And so with that, I am going to support this project.
Thank you. We have, uh, Councilmember Washington, Councilmember Dunbar, Councilmember Jackson.
Um, thank you, Madam President. Um, this is really important to me, particularly since it affects everybody in the city, but it sits in the ward that I represent. And I, I have dealt with this extensively for the past seven years. I started with Pat Lindeman because I didn't want the golf course sold and he explained everything to me and, and I, I had the utmost respect for his knowledge in, in drainage and environmental and, and I'm thankful to see Dennis and Willow here from Spicer. I know they are both very concerned with the environment and I appreciate your support on that. So, through that seven years, um, I have actually gone one way or the other, um, had very difficult and not so friendly conversations with Joel Ferguson and Christopher Strokowski through the years. Thank you for being willing to have those conversations with me. Here's where, what I want to say is, I have to acknowledge that the people of Lansing voted to sell the Red Cedar Golf Course with the intent that it would be developed. I actually went through that golf course before anything really happened with Leo and Christopher Jerome, and what I saw was absolutely appalling. There was human waste with toilet paper, women were being beaten and raped in the homeless encampment that was there. This was not a beautiful park that, or this wonderful green space that people would like us to think that maybe it was. And maybe that's how you remember it in the rearview mirror, but that wasn't the reality of what was happening there. The RFP went out, it went out far and wide. Uh, Mayor Bernero, um, searched for developers, he settled on the Ferguson-Cass proposal. Is it, at that time, it was the only proposal that made sense. If I remember correctly, I believe one of the proposals was an aquarium and the person didn't have any funding or backers, and the other proposal was straight-up student housing. So I think we need to remember that when we complain about what Ferguson and Cass are offering for a development. It's taken six years to get this project right. What we are getting is not what we were promised, but let's remember, we're not giving the developers what we initially promised either. We are getting off on this proposal with zero responsibility and I am thrilled. So maybe we didn't get the utopia, but we didn't give it to them either. So we have to keep that in mind. I'm happy with, that the brown field has been dropped dramatically. I'm happy that I was able to get them to agree to prevailing wage in local labor. This project would not be happening if they hadn't agreed to that. That is something we stood firm on, it's something I absolutely believe in. So I, I appreciate the compromise in that, um, area. I'm happy that a few of us were able to get them to move away from the studio apartments and to actually put into the development agreement that at least 30% will be two-bedroom apartments and that they will not market to a student population. I'm happy that we will still have the two hotels. We are desperately short of hotel rooms in this area. If folks don't know, some places are actually taking their clients to Grand Rapids to get them decent hotel rooms. So let, let's be glad that we're getting two hotels. We can use more. Um, let's see. And for folks that are worried about the student housing, let, let's be real here. They don't want them empty. If they're empty, they're gonna have to retrofit the buildings. They, they don't want property that isn't being used. That doesn't even make sense. So as long as the bones are there of the building, if they can't fit it with student housing, I guarantee you, they will turn it into something where they will get revenue. And to thank you for doing it in two phases so that we have the assurance that if it doesn't work in the first phase, you won't repeat it for more empty units. I know I'm like, this is lengthy, but I've given my heart and soul to this for seven years. So I just want the opportunity to explain where I'm coming from. I've researched this project extensively and have had several meetings with communications people, environmental experts, union officials, economic impact people, residents, the Drain Commission and more. I have gone to every charrette that was ever held on this project and I still am in contact with the folks that were part of that. Jenny Grau, um, has, um, supported this and she was actually the facilitator at these, um, charrettes. This project is backed by them all. I am now comfortable with this agreement, especially since the city of Lansing is not on the hook for anything. We will have energy on the avenue, we will have a beautiful 22-acre park, and at this moment, we have no park. The River Trail will be beautified, the river will be cleaned up, and the developer will also have to pay about 20% of the assessment to the city for the Montgomery Drain cleanup. This is critically important to me. If this development does not get approved, the citizens will have to pick up the 17% to 20% tab of the city's portion, um, that the developer would have been paying. I believe the cost will be about a million dollars a year for 30 years, which will be our assessment. And these are going to be my constituents that are going to have to pick up this assessment portion in one particular neighborhood. That could be so cost prohibitive, or the mayor could choose to spread that amount among all of us, which would also be disastrous. So, looking at it from the first ward, I, I just can't put that on my constituents if the developer can pick it up. You have my word that I will never support another development on Michigan Avenue that is intended for student housing. The Skyview Project was put up because the Jeromes were angry about the Red Cedar Project, so they sold the property. We were told by those developers that it would not be student housing and they lied to us. This is exactly why we have ensured that we have a clawback in the brown field agreement, that if this developer does not do what they say they will do, the brown field goes away. I hope I haven't bored you with this, but I want folks to understand exactly why I will be supporting this development, why I think it is in the best interest of the city, I think it is in the best interest of my constituents, and I think it is in the best interest of our environment. And, and having said that, they have made, they have agreed to absolutely everything we have brought to them, including, um, ensuring that the runoff from the parking lot will be less than what the runoff is today. And they will have greenery, they will have charging stations, they will have bike repair stations. So, there's nothing more that I could ask from this development team, and I for one will stand behind my vote and I look forward to the project.
Thank you, Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Dunbar, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Hussein, Councilmember Dunbar.
For nobody having comments, we all now have comments.
For nobody having comments, we all now have comments.
I think you opened the floodgate.
It did.
I should've gone quick.
Pardon the pun, yeah. And that's actually what I'm gonna ask about. If you didn't hear it, Councilmember Spindly said, "Open the floodgates." So, the question that I am going to pose, and I don't know if you will allow this to be answered. There are a few people that are watching tonight that wants one final reassurance, and it's probably gonna have to come from Pat, that what you're doing there is engineered so as not to create a horrific flooding problem to the properties west of 127, heading down Kalamazoo. So...
I hadn't called on you yet, Pat.
Yeah. But that is one stickler. I mean, not having the money to pay for the assessments, but certainly not having the money to fix whatever would happen if they were underwater for whatever. So, could you please speak to that, if the President allows you?
Cat, if you would please come down and understand, we're not going through the whole drain and all of that information.
As always, I will adhere to your time limits.
Okay. When I go like this, that means it's...
Yeah. It's pretty tough for me to stop talking. I'm a politician. What can I say? Last week, I sent everyone up there a letter, and it outlines the impact of this development on the river and the flooding of the Red Cedar River downstream and upstream. The letter was put together by really smart people who understand water. They all work for me. We worked on this letter for about a half a day, and we wanted to make sure that all the numbers were dead accurate. The issue to your question is, does this development and does Frandor itself, after the drain is built, contribute to downstream flooding? The answer is an equivocable no. It does not. Not one drop. In fact, this project and the Draina Project, the Draina Projects associated with it, actually reduce by very large volumes of water going downstream. The development itself, if you can picture a football field, 1,000, what is it, 100 yards or something like that, 300 feet by whatever it is, four and a half feet deep will be stored above the floodplain on this project. I don't know how you can say that that's gonna cause more stuff downstream. Besides that, the project itself is being forced by my office to build low-impact design elements to its parking lot, to its roofs, to all of its collective sidewalks, and any other imperviousness it may have, that forces it through a filter system, so it's even cleaner before it gets to our filter system. So, they have gone above and beyond with their architects and their engineers to work with my people to make sure that this happens. In terms of the flooding downstream, this is an extremely positive project. It will eliminate elements of the flooding downstream. It's not to say that it won't flood downstream. It's gonna flood, but it'll be less because of this.
Okay. Thank you. And I didn't have to tell you to wrap it up, so that was good. Councilmember Dunbar, was that it? All right. Councilmember Jackson and Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you. It would be easy just to vote, but since this has been an ongoing project, and so many people are invested, and so many people care about it, I just wanna explain my rationale for my decision. So, the project, I like it generally. I like the fact that it's going from a space that's underutilized and turning it into something that we can still consider mixed-use despite the changes. There's places to live. There's retail places. There's hotels, which, as Councilmember Washington pointed out, is much needed. There's parks, amphitheater, ice skating, trail connections, all, a bunch of different things there. So, I like that generally. I like that the city of Lansing, over the years, negotiated for what we got. It started off, years before I was here, as one thing, where we were on the hook for a little more. And over the years, for one reason or another, certain concessions were made, certain inputs were taken, and we came out with a development agreement, a purchase agreement, and then ultimately, this brownfield today. So, all those things are what we bargained for, either through our administration or through council's comments. And if we didn't bargain for it, and we just sold it without a brownfield or any other attachment, then we don't know what we would get. We could have 100% student housing or 100% Frisbee Park. We don't know what we would have. So, I like that we do control that part. I also like that it's, through intentional efforts, has gained a lot of support from different organizations. The labor groups support it, and that's because it's creating Lansing jobs. And we've all pretty much stood up here and supported and advocated for Lansing jobs. So, this project is gonna be one of them that brings so many construction jobs in for so long, so many permanent jobs once it's done. And I think that's worth noting. Also, the business community, Chamber of Commerce, you know, they're well-invested in the region, the city, and, you know, they support it. Some neighborhood organizations, and the constituents, my constituents in the fourth ward that I talked to about this, they generally supported it. In fact, I don't, I can't, I don't wanna say unequivocally there is nobody that didn't support it. Is that a double negative? But, for the most part, fourth ward people did seem to wanna see it developed and wanna see something happen to that property. The $54 million brownfield infrastructure improvements is something that, you know, the city's related to. And again, that's how we get our control. But, any project that's gonna build would have to go through basically the same type of planning and building that the developers here did. So, pretty much, no matter what we want, probably unless it's, you know, something like a park or something that's a cleaned-up green space, other than that, any type of buildings would require, building above the floodplain would require the investment in the engineering and the infrastructure and the parking structure and all that. So, I think that's, you know, 54 million out of the 250, I think that's a pretty good exchange. The other thing that I really appreciate is the prospective flood relief. I was concerned, mainly because there's so many people that live around there that was very concerned whether or not they'll be flooded out and whether there'll be some impact. But ultimately, what I relied on, that would be the approval from the DEQ of the plans that said that they're not gonna have any harmful interference. That's one thing that had to happen. And also, relying on experts in the field. Pat, you know, I don't know you that well, your background. I know you're elected, which you said you're a politician, which is true. And that gives me some pause for, you know, about our floodplain engineering. But you said that you have some smart people in your office also. So, also, other smart people. So, I can't say, you know, that there's gonna be flooding, or that this and that, and other things are gonna happen. I just have to kinda rely on the people who, you know, were hired and have the degrees and the training on that. Some things that I dislike, in the same breath, when we talk about floodplain, and basically, you know, if you follow the climate change, there's possibility of more rain and flooding and extreme events. So, what used to be a 100-year storm, which this project does not fully account for, because after, I forgot the number, if it's 20-year or whatever, you gotta move the cars up. You gotta do all these things, so the flood comes and goes down. But, that may happen more regularly, and I don't know if these plans accounted for it. The other thing that was a little pause is the adversarial history of the project, going all the way back from before I was here. Some of the misinformation that may or may not be out there, and I only say that because I read things that, I've been in just about every meeting for this, that's been in council, and then some outside meetings. So, and Loretta Stanaway, you have too. I can tell you that right now. So, other than us, Loretta and some of the developers, I don't think everybody has all the information that we collected over all these months. But, I think to make a full decision, you kinda gotta know about it all. So, that's one thing out there. I'm a little concerned about the loss of green space, even though the green space is not really utilized, and it's still a little, I don't know. I haven't walked out there since it was a golf course. And last time I was there, we were pulling fish out of the lake that accumulated. So, I don't know what's back there, but it's not anything. I like running trails, but I never went back there because I feel like it'll be muddy. I don't know. But it's still a loss of green space. I'm a little concerned about the construction timeline, doing the student housing first, because in my assessment, and from the needs of the constituents, I look at the hotels. I look at the restaurants. I look at the park connections, and some of the other amenities being more valuable than the student housing. So, if you build those first, I don't know. I would rather see the other stuff be built. And the thing that brings me most pause is just the unknown future. Again, I'm relying on experts of Drain Commissioners. I'm relying on engineers, the developers' representation of the project and what it's supposed to be. But, you know, as well as its plan, still, only time will tell. And some people are able to hang their hat 100%, like, yes, this is gonna be great. We're gonna, I told you so. And, you know, I don't know. I can't see the future. So, that brings me pause. But overall, I'm gonna support it for the reasons I said, and I just wanted to put my rationale on the record.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah. First, I wanna say how much I appreciate my council colleagues. And, you know, I think every single person at this dais has critically thought their way through this process. So, I very much appreciate everybody here. I also appreciate, I mean, this has been going on for a very long time. So, I appreciate the work that has been done, sorry, by former council members, as well as our administration and our former administration. This is, has been an absolute complex, long, drawn-out process for one reason. To be fair about this conversation, many people have discussed how, you know, fantastic this site is. From a location aspect, that is true, but this is an incredibly difficult property to plan for and to develop. And so, again, I'm just very appreciative of everybody that has been at the table. For me, this has always been about cost versus benefits. And, you know, obviously, the cost aspect is clear to see. When you're talking about the tax capture, the $123 million tax capture over 30 years that is part of the brownfield plan, that is an incredible cost to many people, at least in their minds. We understand that there would have to be some brownfield, no matter what was put on this site, to capture some of those dollars that are actually going to be spent to make this property developable. But in people's minds, I understand why that is an incredible amount to try to digest. And when we talk about the city of Lansing, obviously, we have to pay very close attention to that. It's less than 30% of that $123 million, but the $36 to $37 million that will not hit our general fund over the next 30 years. But with that being said, for me, the benefits are as follows. Number one, we do have a $9 million pass-through to both the Lansing-Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, as well as the Michigan-Brownfield Revolving Fund. To me, that's incredibly important, because those dollars can help us support reactivation of sites that need reactivation in the worst of ways. The fact that we will have a $9 million pass-through over the 30-year period to the city and the school district, again, that's incredibly important, as this site generates no tax revenue at this time. The hundreds of permanent jobs that are created, whether that be in senior care, hotel, commercial, rentals, obviously, we will see an influx of income tax revenue. And when you look at the two highest revenue streams in the city of Lansing, we're looking at property tax and income tax. So, that revenue stream is incredibly important. The hundreds of construction jobs, I think the number referenced earlier was 1,200, with prevailing wage commitment for all activities that are brownfield-eligible. That's incredibly important as well. So, the fact that we were able to tie that in there and actually give our local trades an opportunity to bring their workers home, to work on projects right here in the city of Lansing, so that they can support their families, that's incredibly important to me. The fact that we were able to enter into a local labor agreement, I think that was on June 4th of 2018, is important to me as well. The induced jobs created is incredibly important. All of this results, obviously, in higher income tax for the city of Lansing. The $500,000 of hotel tax revenue that will, on an annual basis, go to the county, we have not talked about that very much. That's $15 million over the course of the 30-year tax capture. That is incredibly important. The nearly 20%, sorry, of the Montgomery Drain's costs assessed to the development team, or I shouldn't say the development team, but the Red Cedar Development, it's about $4.42 million over a 30-year period. That's incredibly important as well. And the fact that these projects will be done at the same time, my understanding is this reduces the cost of Pat Lindeman's project by at least $500,000. That's important. Contrary to reports of, you know, there's been a lot of discussion that basically, this is, you know, a little more than student housing and maybe senior assisted living. And why we downplay that, I don't know. And I'll talk about that in a minute. But this is much more than that, in my mind. The fact that we do have the student housing on the easternmost portion of this property, which to me is the most appropriate portion of the property to have the student housing, and the fact that we have the phase-in piece, so that we don't, I'm hoping that guards against any vacancy issues on-site. That's an important addition to me. The, you know, the fact that we do have, and I appreciate the development team being so responsible with some of our concerns, but the fact that we will have two separate towers, although we'll have the shared kind of structure, although we do have two separate towers, we've actually increased the amount of hotel rooms by 30. So, we're looking at 280 hotel rooms that we do not have right now. We know that that is an absolute urgent need in our region. So, I'm incredibly happy about that. The 150 market-rate homes, we fought hard to add back some of the language in terms of marketing toward professionals. We have that in this development agreement. That is important. And the fact that 30% of these market-rate apartments will be two bedrooms, at least. And remember that, everything in terms of development obligations in this development agreement, these are the minimum requirements. It does not mean that we won't see above and beyond. So, that's, again, an important addition. The 40,000 square feet of aggregate commercial space, we don't, I don't think, talk enough about that aspect of this property, and the fact that that really does enhance this multi-use piece of it. And then, the 120 units of assisted living units, that is, again, we talked a lot about the assisted living units, and I felt at times, we kinda downplayed the significance of that. We know that that's an urgent need, and we know that we need to provide more opportunities in the city of Lansing, and in the region, really, to ensure that we are allowing for, and again, we have a growing population, but we're allowing for people to age with dignity in space. And I think when you looked at the, you know, the skilled nursing piece, the memory care facility piece, this sounds a lot like Grand Haven to me, off Mount Hope. And if you've never been there, I will tell you, that is an absolutely incredible facility. And again, when we talk about the allowance for people to age with dignity in space, I believe that this development agreement will help us realize that. And then, there's other things. You know, when you look at the River Trail enhancements, you look at the boardwalks and the trail connectivity, this is going to be, again, when you look at the development agreement and what it calls for, it will be a walkable, bikeable development. This is a dense development, which is exactly what we want, and really what we need in the city of Lansing. I think the arguments against, particularly as it pertains to the moving of water, environmental issues and things of that nature, I think every argument that has been made has truly been put to bed. And a couple were referenced earlier. When we talk about downstream properties experiencing more flooding, or we talk about runoff worsening, every single one of those arguments has been put to rest. This is a unique, I think, development in that our environmentalists, whether it be MDNR, whether it be the DEQ, whether it be our Drain Commissioner, whether it be some of the locally environmentalists, parks, everybody has been involved. There's been oversight, and everybody has approved of this or supported of this. When we look at our local labor, and when we look at Chamber of Commerce and our business community, the fact that everyone is supportive does also matter to me. When I talk about my own constituents, I think about my own constituents in southwest Lansing, it's been a bit split, but I will say that the majority is in support of this development. They gave us permission back in 2011 and 2012 to sell this, and to look at development agreements such as this. And again, I think most are supportive. So, I just wanna make sure that when we have the conversation, regardless of where people find themselves in terms of their position and support, or not being able to support this particular project, that we're being fair. This really does, this development agreement, really does, I believe, give us a good opportunity to have a multi-use, multi-generational development right there at the Red Cedar property. And then, the last thing, you know, I do wanna, I do want to say is thank you to the development team. The development team has been very, very responsive. I've been on city council for three years and some change, and this is probably one of the most transparent and kind of responsive processes on the end of the development team that I've been involved with. Whether it be at our individual constituent contact meetings, not only have they come solicited, they've come unsolicited. I've seen them at a number of other constituent contact meetings in other wards. I've met with this development team over coffee many times over. They've been very responsive to calls, to emails, et cetera. And with regards to us receiving some of the changes late, many of us were working late into last week to get concerns that we were hearing from constituents and things of that nature over to the development team. And so, some of that is on us, and the fact that we were still working this. Every single concern that I brought to this development team was acted on in terms of this development agreement. So, for that, I thank each and every... So for that, I thank each and every member of the, the development team. But again, so with that being said, I will, I will support this. I certainly understand people that cannot, but I do think that this has been transparent, incredible, engaging process, and I really do appreciate everybody in the critical, I should say, the fact that they critically thought their, their way through this process.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. Are there other councilmember comments? Councilmember Washington.
I just wanted to add one thing, because I know a lot of people talk about the community should get something out of these developments. I want folks to know that when we're talking about green space, I, I understand the concern, but we do have 111 parks in the city of Lansing, and some of them are incredibly large. We have Fenner Nature Center, we have Kegel Park, I mean, I could go on and on and on. We, we do really well in this city, we have more than the national average, and I, I'm very proud that we have more parks than the national average. But the other thing that I think is important is this 22-acre park that we are going to be getting. It'll be the development, the developers that are taking care of this park, and, and I think we need to recognize that, that, that is something else that they will be taking care of.
Thank you. Other, other councilmember comments? Then I will close with my comments. First of all, I want to thank all the councilmembers for their comments, many of them are things that I was thinking that if one didn't say, somebody else did, so I'm not going to reiterate all of those issues that were brought out. I do want to remind the public that if not once, twice, this was put to the ballot about selling the Red Cedar Golf Course. There was the first one section of it, and then there was another section that was added to it that we went back to the ballot again. Did I support selling the Red Cedar Golf Course? No, I, I didn't, but the public did. And with that, I remember the first discussions, and Bob Johnson, who was the development director at that time, sitting down in front of us, talking about the fact that the development that could come from this versus the fact that we had a space that was not being utilized at all. So when we look at where we were when this first started and where we are today, I must agree with all of my colleagues that spoke about the fact that a number of things have changed, and many of them for the benefit of us with the city. Going back from the fact that we would have been responsible for $38 million in bonding to where we have none today, the development team has listened very closely to all the concerns of council. I too am one that wanted to make sure that local labor was represented from the very beginning with this, that the park that would be created would be taken care of. Many times with Pat over the drain issues and how those would be impacted, and how he said from the very beginning that a development, a project would help the city defray the cost of what it would be for assessments, and, and that's where we are today. So I thank the development team, I thank the councilmembers and the administration for the time that they have taken in taking all of these meetings. Sometimes people accuse us of getting the information in front of us, looking at it and voting. If we were to add all the hours over the last seven years that we've put into this, it would be something that the public would not believe, the amount of time and effort that's been put into this. So I will be supporting that, and with that, we will have a roll call vote.
On adoption of the resolution, Councilmember Dunbar, Councilmember Garza, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Hussein, Councilmember Spatafor, Councilmember Spitzley, Councilmember Washington, Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Seven yays, one nay, the resolution is adopted by a two-thirds vote.
And now what we're going to do is we're going to move to the brownfield on this. I think we've had a great deal of discussion on, on the issue. If you could give Councilmember Hussein just a brief description of the brownfield, and then we will vote on that as well.
Sure, sorry, just looking for the exact.
It's number G under.
G, yes, there it is. Okay, so this is again, brownfield plan number 72, it deals with the Red Cedar Development at 203 South Clifford. You know, I'm not going to go, again, we've had a public hearing, we've had a number of conversations pertaining to the brownfield plan. Just very quickly, we know that the capture period is 30 years, we know that when you talk about eligible activities and the interest paid back, the tax capture is $123,454,516. Again, there is nearly $9 million pass-through to both the, I shouldn't say both, but the aggregate would be to the city of Lansing as well as the Lansing School District. And then there's also a nearly $9 million pass-through to the Lansing, I'm sorry, Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and the Michigan Brownfield Redevelopment Fund. And with that being said, I'd move the brownfield plan number 72.
Have a motion on the brownfield. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose. The brownfield plan passes seven to one. Now we'll move into the rest of our agenda at this time.
Okay, we have a resolution introduced by all councilmembers.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, thank you for the opportunity to introduce this resolution. Every year on April 28th, communities and workers, work sites around the world honor friends, family members, and colleagues who've been killed or injured on the job. And the Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics estimated that in last year, 5,100 workers were killed by traumatic injuries. On average, 14 workers were killed on the job every day. So it's appropriate that we honor the memory of the courage and courageous and dedicated members of Michigan's labor force who have been injured or disabled or who have died as a result of workplace accidents. Therefore, I move the resolution that designates April 28th, 2019, as Workers Memorial Day in the city of Lansing.
Have a resolution before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Mr. Clerk.
We are to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, so before you, as a resolution of confirmation of appointment, this is for Emily Jefferson as an at-large member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term to expire June 30th, 2021. Ms. Emily Jefferson was with us for quite a bit of time, she stood strong for quite a while, she has bowed out, and I do believe she has went home. But with that being said, we actually had Ms. Emily Jefferson into development and planning recently, and, and it was a very, very good interview. The Board of Zoning Appeals is a nine-member body, it does have eight at-large representatives and one planning board representative, and they essentially are charged with approving or denying requests for variances from our zoning code. So you think of number of signs, size, size of signs, location of signs on commercial buildings, fence height requirements, location of businesses, things of that nature. So in any event, when it comes to Ms. Jefferson, she is currently a fourth ward resident, she has lived in the city since 2016, she is a, an assistant to our state attorney general. She was approached at some point by Mayor Shore about potentially serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and she was thrilled with the opportunity or for the opportunity to contribute to the city of Lansing. As always, when it comes to the Board of Zoning Appeals, there were some questions from development and planning committee members about impartiality, and, and essentially approving and denying variances, sorry, as well as the ability to disclose affiliations when, you know, conflicts of interest arise, things of that nature, and the willingness to recuse from those respective votes. She said absolutely, she would adhere to those expectations, and with that assurance, we did recommend approval. And so with that being said, I would move the appointment of Ms. Emily Jefferson for a term to expire 6/30/2021.
All right, you have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, so these, the, the next two items are basically one and the same, but we'll take them up respectively. These are the bylaws for the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority. This particular authority was established in 2009, but it hasn't been incredibly active. So when Mayor Shore came into office, it was a goal of his to increase the activity, to repopulate the boards, and to get bylaws finally approved. Bylaws had actually never been approved for these respective authorities. Per the Michigan Corridor Improvement Authority Act, not only do the authority board, I'm sorry, Board of Directors of the authority have to approve the bylaws, but the city council has to as well. So the Board of Directors of this respective, or particular authority approved and adopted, it says updated bylaws, but again, these, these bylaws have never been confirmed or approved. So in any event, that happened on February 14th, 2019. The city attorney has reviewed and approved as to form, so with that being said, I would move the bylaws for the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority.
Have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, so this resolution pertains to the bylaws for the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority, same purpose, same backstory. Again, this by, I'm sorry, this corridor improvement authority was established in 2009 as well. The Board of Directors of the authority approved the bylaws on January 25th, 2019. So with that being said, I would move the bylaws for the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority.
Thank you. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. Councilmember Hussein.
Yes, this is actually the setting of a public hearing in consideration of SLU 1 2019 for a church use in the F Commercial District.
I, okay, yes, I cross one off.
That's okay. And the location is 900 Southland Avenue, which is just south of the MLK, I'm sorry, the McDonald's on South MLK, and this would be in Suite 918. The applicant in this case is a Holiday Park, I believe it's Durgo Property Holdings, and again, this would be to allow for a church in a multi-tenant building on Southland. We did have Pastor Mary Ellen into development and planning to discuss this request, she was also with us tonight, but again, due to late hours, she had to leave. She is the pastor of the Church of the Amazing Grace, she has 20 parishioners, services are held on Sundays from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m., as well as Tuesday and Thursday from 7:30 to 8, I'm sorry, 7 to 8:30 p.m. They currently are operating out of 6810 South Cedar, but she discussed this particular area, some of the things that are being, being done in this particular area to move what is kind of a vulnerable demographic in, in some of the adjacent properties forward. She specifically referenced 3200 South Washington, and, and kind of following that story over the last several years, and, and just really wanting to be a part of kind of the broader efforts in that area. She talked about clothing drives and food drives that they'd like to, you know, try to not only start but sustain in that area, so we appreciated her, obviously, for that. This is a pretty troubled commercial building, to be frank. We've had illegal gambling establishments at this particular location, we've had drug raids and subsequent convictions, we've had just a number of issues, and so we had some questions, I think, when this first came before us. This particular suite did at one point house the, I think it was the Lansing Herbal Farmers' Market, and at one point, they were actually allowing the cannabis, the first cannabis church, to hold their, their meetings, I think it was just about every Sunday. So I, I think our first question was, was this the applicant? We were able to unequivocally determine that that was a no, so that was important to us. The zoning administrator and the planning board have recommended approval of this, they have found that the parking is adequate, and that churches are allowed in the F Commercial District within SLU, and so they really do believe that that is best used for that particular site. So the public hearing would be May 13th at 7:00 p.m., and I would move the resolution to set that public hearing.
Hey, have a motion. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President, and I know we're just setting the public hearing on this, I, I understand that, but there's a laundromat in there and, and some others, you know, so I, I'm questioning the, the adequate parking designation. You know, a special land use, I, I just, I, I get those, and I've, I've approved some of those, but to have, you know, a church in a strip mall that has a laundromat and some others, I, I, I find that troubling. So, you know, I'm, I'm probably not, I'm not going to vote on any, I'm not going to support any of it, but I just, I just, you know, fundamentally, I think that it's, it's a strip mall. There are other places, if they want to do outreach services at 3200, there are churches that are available nearby, there's a bank that's available nearby, I'm not quite, you know, and, and I would even question that as a special land use. I just don't, there's something about putting a church in a commercial strip mall that has commercial establishments, that if they grow, there's going to be a burden on the already scarce parking that's already there. Thank you.
Councilmember Hussein.
And, and you did say that we're only setting the public hearing, so I don't want to, you know, obviously, talk at length about this, but I think in development and planning, we talked about some of those same issues, and we talked about, and that actually got brought up with regards to the planning board's discussion. There are parking spaces that are immediately outside of, obviously, the commercial suites, and then also on the other side of the parking lot. This particular building, there is a laundromat, but none of the other suites are populated at this point. If this particular group was to grow, they obviously would have to grow into additional suites, I think therefore taking up, you know, I would say the bulk majority of the commercial space there, and then obviously that need for parking. Right now, there are only 20 parishioners, and I think that was part of the planning board's recommendation, or I should say, the decision in making the recommendation that they did, but certainly understand your concerns, and they were discussed at length in development and planning.
Are there any other questions or concerns? And Councilmember Spitzley, other than the fact of them going into another church, they would have to receive a special land use for any other building that they were in? Okay, just, yeah, yeah. All right, with that, all those in favor of setting the public hearing for May 13th say aye. Aye, posed. That is six, one, I don't believe Councilmember Jackson is here, so that's six, one. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, so this is, let me refine my spot, okay, this is Act 10, 2019, this is being called Simkin Triangle Acquisition for 3427 Pleasant Grove. The city of Lansing, back in 2017, acquired three parcels of land off Simkin Drive from the Ingle County Land Bank. And, and we've had a lot of conversation as part of this council, we also had an executive order that came out of the administration's office not too long ago. This is, this is the property of Beacon South, and since then, $400,000 has been raised to not only construct an artificial soccer field, but to also erect a playground, walking trails, and the like. With that being said, there, the property is not accessible from Pleasant Grove, and so this acquisition was one that was proposed by parks. It would be the southwest corner of 3427 Pleasant Grove, which is owned by Mrs. Carmenati. The acquisition price would be $1,000, and this would allow for access, this would allow for signage, and things of that nature. The width of the property is about 20 feet, so it would give us, I think, better sightlines, obviously, better access into that park from Pleasant Grove. There's so much that is going on, kind of behind the curtain to make some things happen in kind of the, the parking lot of the Pleasant Grove Plaza, and then obviously, we have a number of really good reputable businesses right there on, on West Homes, and we just like to kind of create flow and, and things of that nature throughout that district. There will be some tree removal, but with that being said, there will also be additional plantings, that was important to reference, as Brett Koschinsky, our Parks Director, did reference that in development and planning. The zoning staff, I'm sorry, not zoning staff, Susan Statwick, which is a part of zoning and planning board, did, did approve this. And with that being said, you know, there's too many people, I, I think, to thank that has been, you know, essentially a part of this process, but again, so many people, as well as city council and things of that nature, have really worked hard on these things. But I think more than anybody, I want to thank Mrs. Carmenati. She's been incredibly willing to engage, she's very, very happy about some of the activity that's taking place behind this property, because the activity has not always been, to be quite frank, all that respectable back there, and so she's incredibly excited about this, and we appreciate her willingness. So with that being said, I would move the Simkin Triangle Acquisition for 3427 Pleasant Grove.
We have a motion before us. Are there any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. That takes us into General Services.
I think we got one more of them.
Oh, the SOU, I'm sorry, thank you.
So this is for SLU 2, 2018, residential use in the I Heavy Industrial District for 1609 North Flare Street. We've had a lot of discussion about this, it's been through the public hearing process, we have not received any, I don't believe, any comments either for or against, so with that being said, I would move the SLU 2, 2018 for residential use in the I Heavy Industrial District for 1609 North Flare Street.
Do you have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose. Aye, pose same sign. Passes unanimously.
Okay, now we are to the Committee on General Services.
All right. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is a resolution to set the public hearing for a noise waiver for Mount Hope Avenue and Capitol Avenue. Construction, these are going to be busy projects, and we need to get the construction done during the construction period, which means in order to ensure that we get these projects done before the snow flies, that we can have this noise waiver in place. On Mount Hope Avenue, it's for the period of two weeks between June 1st and through August 30th. The noise waiver will be from Saturday and Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The one for Capitol Avenue will be 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the two weeks, and 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Sunday. That's what I was struggling with, and that's to accommodate for the church traffic. This is to set the public hearing for May 13th at 7:00 p.m. right here in City Hall.
And just for clarification, it's more than two weeks, but it's from July 1st to August 30th? June 1st?
Two weeks within that period is what the resolution says, sometime within that period.
Okay. So, and that would be for May 13th and then would be the public hearing and then voting on it on May 20th to be able to have it done before June 1st. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose same sign. Thank you, Councilmember Washington.
We are to the Committee on Public Safety.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is a resolution saying a show cause hearing in consideration of an order to make safe or demolish for 840 Maple Hill Avenue. This location was referred to the demo board by building, by the Building Safety Office. It is estimated SEV value of $26,500. It is estimated that it would cost $93,000 for repairs. You can see on the, on the screen, of course, the house is vacant. We would be setting the hearing for May 29th? No, I'm sorry, April 29th.
April 29th.
April 29th, I didn't put that on there. The, the property owner does not live in the city of Lansing. They have not pulled any permits to date, which was, I think it was April 11th. There had been no, I'm sorry, it was April 18th. As of April 18th, there had been no permits pulled, and with that, I move the resolution to set the show cause hearing for April 29th.
We have a motion. Are there any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose same sign.
We are to the Committee on Public Services.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I first need to apologize to Mr. Sorgh. I didn't see him over there. He's still in the room, so I would have pulled that earlier, but Walt, sorry about that.
Oh, I looked around. He was sitting over there, and one's gone, so.
So, I don't need to go into a lot of detail. The Committee on Public Service did meet with Mr. Sorgh. This was his first choice of service to the city. So, he's here tonight, and I would like to move the resolution appointing Walter L., Walter Lark Sorgh Jr. as the second ward member of the Board of Public Service for a term to expire June 30th, 2022.
And we have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Mr. Sorgh, if you could please come down, we'll get you sworn in, and then you can go home.
Ten years working for the legislature teaches you patience.
We appreciate that. Kathy's going to get your picture.
Am I allowed over there?
Yeah. Yeah, right.
Yeah, he called and said, pretend I was just quitting with you.
All right, raise your right hand. For me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear.
But I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
But I will faithfully discharge the duties.
No faithfully discharge the duties.
As a member of the Board of Public Service.
As a member of the Board of Public Service.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Sorgh.
And as they sign the appropriate paperwork, Vice President Spatafor will move on to the next resolution that you have before us.
Yes, I would like to move the special assess, I'm sorry, I'd like to move the adoption of Roll GB 2018 for the Trash and Grass Abatement Special Assessment for the Glenburn Commons. Public Service Committee did meet to hear the appeals, and all appeals were denied or resolved in committee.
Okay. We have a motion before us. Vice President Spatafor, how many appeals did you have?
We had two, and one actually turned out to be an item for clarification. The resident thought he had shown up to protest being, he thought he was being fined because he didn't mow his lawn. It was not that. We explained it, it turned into a non-issue, so there was.
Okay. Well, that's much better than the last time we did it.
I think they're getting used to it now.
Okay.
This is the second year that it's been assessed.
Oh, it's been more than that, but, yeah. Okay. With that, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
Then we are to the Committee of the Whole.
Vice President Spatafor, we are on number B.
Madam President, I move that the Lansing City Council hereby approves the recommendation of the public hearing to be set for the city of Lansing fiscal year 2019-2020 budget on Monday, May 13th, 2019, at the regularly scheduled city council meeting at 7:00 p.m. here in City Hall, City Council Chambers.
We have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the resolution authorizing, authorizing the issuance and sale of wet weather control program state revolving fund project obligation bonds. Recall that we did, we've talked about these a couple of times, but they're in order to comply with our wet weather mitigation plan, or wet weather control program, rather. There is a blank spot in the, in the resolution for a date, so I'm looking to the city attorney for that information.
Mr. City Attorney, we are looking at the resolution just before this one.
Or maybe the city clerk, it's about publishing. It's on page XIIIB6, small c.
Oh, publication date? Hang on, we can.
It's done 45 days ago, I know that.
It's more than 45 days.
Yeah. It was at least 45 days ago. We'll pull that one and move on to the next one, and then.
Withdraw my motion?
Yes, you will. Thank you.
Okay. Madam President, I move the resolution authorizing the issue, nope, I just did that. I move the resolution revising the list of authorized outside legal counsel for the city of Lansing and the Board of Water and Light. We did meet, discussed the issues, and some of them are case dependent as identified in the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion before us. We had also asked the city attorney to supply a list, which are in your boxes, of the attorneys and what they are, specialties are, and what they're potentially used for. And so you'll have those in your mailboxes. With that, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously. That will take us to Ways and Means. And Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. The first item before us is a funding application for the Michigan Department of Transportation Local Bridge Program. I think I first need to move, looks like I first need to move a substitute.
Correct.
So, you have before us the, so a motion for acceptance of the substitute, please.
We have a substitute in front of us, all in favor of the substitute. Say aye. Aye, posed. Now you may speak to the substitute.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is a funding application for Michigan Department of Transportation Local Bridge Program for FY 2022. It is a, the, the funding total is in the amount of $1,561. Nope, what is that?
This is the wrong sub.
Substitute we have is for $1,561,000.
$584.90.
Yes, Councilmember, Vice President Spatafor.
So, I think the substitute is actually for item C1C, which is the acceptance of funds from the State of Michigan. The bridge grant program did not have a substitute.
Okay, so let's move to that one since we've approved.
Yep, I, yes, I apologize. Thank you, Vice President Spatafor, I apologize for that. So this is a funding, it's a funding acceptance for the State of Michigan Transportation Funding in the amount.
That's number C on your agenda.
C, right. C1 dot C.
Okay.
And it's, the city of Lansing received two disbursements of these funds totaling And with that, I move the resolution.
We have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously. And now, if you would go back to.
1A.
1A.
Uh-oh.
That's local bridge.
Right, and I don't have that. So, I'm going to spitball here on the resolution here, because I don't have it in my.
Vice President Spatafor.
Yeah, if you could help me with that.
Yeah, so, this one, do you want me to take over?
Go right ahead, do you think?
Out of, just for the committee, or the council's edification, Councilmember Spitzley was very sick that day, so I chaired that meeting.
Oh, thank you.
So, okay, so he's going to move the resolution? All right, thank you. Councilmember Spatafor.
I am going to move the resolution approving application to the Michigan Department of Transportation for local bridge program funding. Annually, we can submit to MDOT funding requests for replacement or preventative maintenance applications for them to fund parts of our bridge programs. Up to five projects can be submitted. The five projects that have been submitted are Aurelius Road over Paulowski Creek, a full replacement; East Elm Street over Red Cedar River, a full replacement; South Washington Avenue over Grand River Avenue, preventative maintenance; Beach Street over Red Cedar River, preventative maintenance; and Chiwasi Street over Grand River for preventative maintenance. The city would receive 95% of the funding to do these projects if approved, and would be on the hook for 5%. The match, for instance, for all five would be $68,148,000, $15,000, $2,000, $8,000 respectively.
And again, this is the list that we're moving forward. We've not received the funding.
This is not even to receive the funding, this is an application for funding.
Right. So, are there any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously. We are now to B on the Ways and Means. That's the grant acceptance for the State of Michigan Enhancement Grant, and is that something?
I'm ready.
You're ready, okay. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So, this is a grant acceptance, a funding amount of $3,300,000, and it is, the grant is paying for road infrastructure and traffic signals related to the two-way road, changing one-way roads to two-way. If you remember earlier this year, the mayor announced that a number of infrastructure changes, and some of them were changing some of the one-way roads that are already downtown to two-way roads, and also enhance traffic signals, which would make us one of the few communities in Michigan to have those enhanced traffic signals. And so, this grant amount, and this, excuse me, this resolution would be the acceptance of this grant amount, $2,150,000 would be for goods and services materials, and $1,150,000 would be for construction. And with that, oh, excuse me, and the grant has, excuse me, has no match, and will pay for design, construction, and materials required to convert the downtown one-way streets to two-way. And with that, I move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilwoman Spitzley, when we talk about enhanced traffic signals, are we talking, I don't remember this, is this for disabled folks, or is this, we'll be compliant with autonomous cars? Okay, that's, okay, because that, if we're going to do it, that's what we need to do.
Yeah, that's correct. And if I seem, if memory serves me correctly, it was to, you know, kind of put us in the forefront of eventually accepting smart cars and driverless vehicles, you know, for the young, because that will not be something that we'll be doing. So, with that, I move the resolution.
We have that motion there. Councilmember Hussein.
Just very quickly, if everything goes as proposed, what is the, what is the proposed timeline for construction?
Mayor, sure.
Probably next summer. I think we can do it earlier, but in conversations with LCC, they were hopeful that we would not do it during the school year. So all the pre-engineering and everything like that will happen. We'll look at the roads for those who are, who don't remember. It's Ottawa, Alleghan, Grand, Capitol, thank you, Pine and Walnut. Those are the six that we spoke with MDOT, those are the six of the pre-engineering going on, and we expect it won't be this summer, but it'll be next summer. And I can tell you, there are many of our business end residents in the downtown area who are very excited about it, because we hear about it a lot. So, but those, that's the timeline. Probably, if we have like a three, four-day holiday in the summer next year, maybe July 4th, something like that, where it's not going to be disruptive, we'd also, we're playing around with timing on, do we do all six at the same time? Do we do two, and then two, and then two, and then really confuse people? So we're playing around with that. There's no solid decision on exactly when, but next summer.
Okay, are there other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously. The last that we have in Ways and Means is a grant acceptance on the U.S. Conferences. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So what we have before us is a resolution to accept a grant in the amount of $10,000. The grant name is the U.S. Conference of Mayors Dollar Wise Innovation Grant, and it would be housed in the Neighborhoods and Citizens Engagement Department, specifically in the Office of Financial Empowerment. And this grant kind of is a continued program of the Lansing Save, where we have worked with students in Lansing to help them to become used to saving and savings accounts. So this, this grant would pay for a Kroger's Reward Program. It's a randomized controlled study in partnership with the Dr. Willie Elliott of University, of the University of Michigan Ann Arbor and the Community League Foundation. So they're looking to reach out to approximately 2,000 Lansing School District students, and they will be offered special Kroger's Reward Cards. And if you, if anybody has a Kroger's Reward Card, and I do, you know, you, you know, if you spend the money, you get kind of like a rebate back, 1% to 4%. And those monies will be deposited quarterly into their Lansing Save account for the, for their post-secondary edge. for their post-secondary education. So, this is a six-month pilot-- excuse me-- for initially the first-- that 2,000 number of Lansing School District students, after which the program will be open to all Lansing Save account holders in the district, which are currently K through 4th graders. With that, I move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Same sign. Vice President Spatafor, we're going back to you on the issuance of the sale of the wet weather bonds. We do have a date to fill--
February 13th, 2019 was when the publication was. So, I would like to move the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of wet weather control program state revolving fund project obligation bonds with the inclusion of that publication date.
We have a publication date in there. Are there any questions or concerns? We did not receive any petitions on this, so we can move forward with this. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. That takes us to our other--
We have the six vote items for the Committee of the Whole.
Yes. And we have dealt with item A, so we have item B and C. So, Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the resolution for a special noise permit to allow work on weekdays and weekends for the period of April 29, 2019, through October 10, 2019, for water main work and milling and resurfacing for Cesare y Chavez Avenue and Washington Avenue, the details of which we're discussing Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Vice President Spatafor. We had the public hearing. We had no one down here. I do not believe we received any letters or communications on that. So, with that, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the resolution authorizing the supplemental appropriation of real estate revenue from the sale of Waverly Park, the Miller Road Center, and the Cooley Hayes House. As you recall, we discussed this a couple weeks ago. The mayor and Mr. Kaczynski-- maybe just Mr. Kaczynski at the time-- presented a plan to purchase equipment and invest in the Friends of Lansing Park and the community fund. And there you go.
We have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? I do have a couple that I want to clarify with the city attorney. The way I read this resolution is that in order to form the nonprofit group, it will have to come back to council to act on. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, there's a procedure to form the nonprofit. There'd have to be an incorporator. The Homer Rule City Act allows a city to create a nonprofit, so there would be a resolution authorizing the filing of articles of an organization and authorizing the mayor to be the incorporator, or someone else to be the incorporator, yes.
And that has to deal with the Friends of Lansing Parks is the nonprofit that we're looking at?
Whatever the name is, it turns out to be, yes, that's the nonprofit.
Mayor Shor.
Thank you. I'm not sure that it's gonna be incorporated by the city. I guess, and maybe-- I know Brett was in my office. Brett's sitting right there. I don't know that the intention was for the city to incorporate the nonprofit. I think that there is going to be a separate group of citizens of Lansing who are going to incorporate that nonprofit. So, I'm not sure if there was a disconnect. Brett, I don't know if you're-- if I'm--
Brett, if you could come down here. The other question I have, as Brett is coming forward, is I want to be perfectly clear that with this resolution and moving money into the community funding, the community fund, that when the money comes back to the city, that the council will be-- with the recommendation of the mayor, will be responsible for the allocation of those dollars, just the same as what we do with the Parks Millage, which there's recommendations made and through the budget process. I just want to make sure that that's what we're talking about. So, let's first talk about the nonprofit, and then we'll go to the other portion.
So, I think what we're talking about here is, in the resolution, the second to the last, be it further resolved.
Yes.
So, it's that the Lansing City Council, being the legislative body of the City of Lansing, may by ordinance or resolution authorize the formation of a nonprofit corporation under the Nonprofit Corporation Act, and and that this nonprofit formed under this act may be organized only for the purposes that are valid public purposes. So, that's the language that we had placed in here based on that Homer Rule Cities Act.
I understand what you're saying, but I think the question-- the statement that the mayor made was that-- that this would be an organization that was formed by itself, not under the auspices of the city. And what we heard-- what I heard you say when you were here before us before was that we would form this, and then they would be responsible for it after that.
And we would have a contract with them--
Correct.
--or we would be contracting with this group.
That's what I understood. Is that-- Mr. Mayor, is that changed?
Maybe I-- maybe I got it wrong then, 'cause I thought-- and maybe we need to-- I thought we were-- that there was a separate organization that was forming, but I think we had this language in in case we form it, but I could have that wrong.
Okay. The city attorney, then Councilmember Spitzley, Councilmember Dunbar, and I think I saw Councilmember Spatafor. Did I see your hand as well?
It can go either way. There's a statutory-- there's a-- there's a statutory authority for the governing body to authorize the creation of a nonprofit for public purposes. And that's under the Nonprofit Act. Or a separate incorporator can form under the same nonprofit. And then, the whole issue is here, there has to be a contract between the city and whatever organization is created to authorize then the funding through-- or the investment through the capital. So, it could go either way.
Councilmember Spitzley, and Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you, Madam President. So, just so I'm clear, when you were here for budget, you also talked about a Lansing Foundation? Did you talk about-- is that what we're talking about here?
That's the same group that we're talking about.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Versus the community foundation, which-- okay.
Right, so, is that-- is the foundation we're talking about then would be the repository of these dollars? And then-- and they have other dollars, larger dollars, or is that totally different? Do you remember what we had-- is that this-- is that what we're talking about here? Okay. Is this sort of like the Friends of Fenner?
So, the nonprofit group that we're talking about, the-- let's just call them the Friends.
Okay.
Yes, but they would not be the repository for the $1.4 million. That's the community--
Yes.
--foundation.
Okay.
And that is not governed in any way by the Friends of Lansing Parks.
Right, okay, I get that then. So, my question-- 'cause I understand what President Wood is saying. So, when Friends of Fenner do fundraising, or-- because it's still kind of a city park, do they have to come back to us on how they spend their money, or are they a separate entity? I'm trying to figure out how this is gonna work.
They're a separate entity.
Okay.
We have a agreement with them for all their programs and services that we offer. We actually send them money as part of the budget. So, it's a little bit different setup with the Friends of Fenner, but they are-- they are an entirely separate organization from the city.
All right, but we're envisioning then that the dollars that come out of that-- the 4% or whatever it is that comes out of this fund annually comes back to the city, therefore it comes back to council as part of the budget process?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. So, with the Friends group, don't-- do they put any money into capital improvements that they raise, or is it mostly into programming? I'm thinking that with-- that's the distinction between the two groups, is that there's no programming necessarily gonna happen with the Friends of that they're to fundraise for.
In terms of that, I mean, my answer to that would be yes. It could go to parks, it could go to recreation. It could-- I mean, they can fundraise-- they could apply for grants for either. It would be all of the above.
Then, if Fenner gets to spend money at Fenner without coming here, do they put it into capital improvement at Fenner? Or because we own the land, it has to come here, and they can use their funds for programs?
They can use their funds for programs, but also remember that they are putting up a pavilion out there currently, and so it's going into capital improvements as well, in terms of what Fenner is raising for out there.
Okay, so then, is that in the budget? Or they just do it?
The pavilion?
Yeah.
Fenner is raising the funds for that, so they just-- I mean, they-- do they just do it? We give permission--
Right.
--of what's being put on the property.
Right.
But they're doing the fundraising for it.
Okay, so, in that regard, how is it different than if there was money raised by this new foundation? If I'm understanding the question that I heard correctly, raising money for something and choosing to put it-- like you choose to put it in a city park, so we don't necessarily have to see that through budget?
No, but we would be, just like we are working with the community foundation right now for Rotary Park, it's city property. And any of that would have to be-- that's what we are contracting with them for. And so, we would-- they wouldn't be able to put anything into the parks that we're not authorizing.
Correct, but that doesn't necessarily mean it has to come to council, is what I'm trying to clarify. 'Cause like at Fenner, it didn't come to council to put in-- it didn't come to council to put in that thing.
I think what Councilmember Wood was speaking of was the money that is put into the Capital Region Community Foundation--
Correct.
--and the interest from that--
Yes.
--that comes back, then gets allocated.
Correct.
And that's what we're talking about.
So, that is different-- I mean, so you're dealing with two different funding sources then. The one that's raised by this organization that we're incorporating, I mean, I guess that's-- you've kind of incorporated it into the same resolution, but it's two separate things, really. It might almost be more easy to clarify if it was too separate.
I understand that it's too separate, but my question had to do with the foundation. Councilman-- Vice President Spatafor.
I think one of the confusing points here, I mean, I think with Fenner, we contract with the Fenner Conservancy, which is a 501(c)(3) that manages Fenner. So, and the Friends of Lansing Parks will be designed, as it's been explained to me, to raise money and grants to help support the Parks Department, and whether it's programs or our capital improvements or whatever, is sort of the need of the city through a contract with us for Parks--